Amen. Thank you so much for staying with us by custody. Pleased to lead this by courtesy. TB and Texas pledge on taking this out.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, look down and give us the wisdom, the guidance, and foresight to follow your plan and not try to rely on our own poor, human understanding of goals and directives. Look after the assembled families of the folks that are here today. Guide and direct us. Forgive us when we fall short of your plan. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. The pledge of allegiance is divine, but the United States of America, the republic of which is sent. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honor of Texas flag. Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas. On the state of God, one indivisible. We have a forum present and this meeting has been recorded. The members of the public may access this meeting through the Texas College website. Item number two is consider approval of the management of regular meeting of the board of trustees held from April twenty-sixth, September twenty-two. Copy of that which is then forward to you in the living room. Any comments or questions on the four minutes?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the managing discussion of that motion. All those who agree to the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three is the chairman's update, which is an opportunity for members of the public to suggest if there's any topics of discussion or to address topics discussed with permission. Those pages limit to three minutes. Any idea like to address the board? Saying we're not going to move on without item number four, which is the chances of the court.
Well, thanks, sir. First, we have, I have nothing to report other than the photographs we're going to show you. And Eric, you're on first.
Yes. Thank you so much. I have so much to say about graduation, so exciting. And Ford, thank you, thank you so much for your support.
You're welcome.
What? You know, the speakers, everybody was wonderful. Our faculty, Dr. Roy Sturgis, he set the tone and I can't give enough kudos to Dr. Fisher. He was wonderful. His first graduation with us and pulled it off without a hitch. He was amazing. I don't know if you knew the numbers, but we had two hundred and ninety-six celebrations, people there to celebrate. Originally, we thought, we had parents who'd say they'd be the two hundred and ninety-sixth paying with their families and it was a full, full, packed house up in the stands. So that was wonderful. But just another little number for you. I've got Deb hands in here, she's in charge of graduation evaluations. For the spring semester so far, we have awarded nine hundred and twenty-three AAS degrees and a hundred and fifty-seven certificates. That tells you how many people are graduating from CTC. The people we celebrated with, that's a small number in comparison to the overall amount of graduates. As you can see in the pictures, Harrison Keller was our commencement address speaker and he was great. And both Harrison Keller, all three Harrison Keller, Dr. Kraft, and Colonel Paul stood up there, shipped all two hundred and ninety-six students. And so that was wonderful. And I have to say that I was honored to represent the chancellor at the graduation. So thank you for allowing me to do that. So everybody was great. It was an amazing event and I can't thank you all the support people enough. Facilities, police, student success and persistence, student services, marketing, Bruce was everywhere taking pictures. And so it was a wonderful, wonderful event. Thank you all for being there and being on stage and participating.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher. We have another graduation in December, so stay tuned, we'll have some work.
Okay, and of course I can't go down with you, Dr. Ross. She orchestrates this thing for months beforehand and keeps us all running throughout the whole thing. Kudos to her.
Dr. Ross told me the other day, we have somewhere around twenty-five hundred graduates total in a given year. So that's quite a few. Yes, sir.
I appreciate y'all elaborating on the numbers of graduates because we, I tend to get lost in the ones that are honored at the ceremony and fail to realize that we do have a greater number that are being graduated. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Next photograph, Dean Fisher's filling in for Dr. Adie, so Dean Fisher.
That's right. That's right. And we were discussing the board members, Chancellor Dean Alvis, and fellow attendees. On Friday, April twenty-ninth, fourteen transitioning soldiers completed the sixteen-week Board Technicians of Tomorrow program, a continuing education cohort number five. Shown in the upper right most photograph, graduates receive a board-specific toolkit that they use as they begin their Texas Board leadership work. Excellent. Our Health Sciences Department recently conducted ceremonial penny ceremony for thirty-seven associate degree in nursing program graduates, signifying their two-year transition from student nurse to practicing nurse. Of note in the center photograph is husband and wife, Sean and Sylvia Dawson, who complete the program together. In the upper right photo, surrounded by department leadership is Professor Emily Kohagen, whose excellence in teaching earned her the coveted student nominated DSD award. Next slide. On Wednesday, twenty-seventh April, the fire department hopes to get another free concert in the gazebo featuring our CTC choir, directed by Dr. David Thomas and the CTC band led by Professor Michelle Palmer. Next slide. On Thursday, April twenty-first, our net impact difference makers assembled here in the Anderson Center, supporting the Where It Lies initiative. As pictured here, participants cut, snipped, knotted, and sewed used t-shirts collected at ten locations across campus into carry bags, which were subsequently built with essentials and distributed to shelters across central Texas. Next slide. Saturday, May fourteenth, our continuing education partners welcomed two hundred and thirty community members to the College for Kids Summer Bluff Off Open House. Attendees met with instructors, participated in hands-on activities, and registered for classes. The College for Kids provides a summer education for students aged five and up. You discover new talents, meet new friends, and expand their knowledge under the guidance of highly passionate and experienced. Next slide. On Friday, the sixth of May, intramural sports hosted a spring semester Eagle Trot Five K run walk. Free and open to the public, thirty-five participants took the challenge of the hilly three-point-one mile course. The first ten runners and first ten walkers to finish earned a commemorative t-shirt. Youth ruled the day. The top three female finishers pictured bottom center were late tigers from Belton High School. And picture top right is Kahine Brown, first place male, first place overall at the time of twenty minutes and twelve seconds. So that's a six-thirty line. There's nobody else in the photo, that's a fast even.
That's fast, thank you. Next photograph. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say I'm really impressed with the way you managed the stages the other night. You you were exceptional. And you know, I wouldn't say it if I didn't get that. I just thought you seemed so comfortable. You, it was nothing that you didn't get anxious about anything. You made everyone, every handoff seem seamless. And I really
Well, I appreciate the timed words, but truly it's a
Yeah, yeah. He had his conversation so hard, it was natural last
Thank you very much.
He's earned the honors to be the emcee of every graduation, so thank you, Ms. Ollie. Thanks. This photograph, many of you were at this event, this was made in Ms. Payson is traveling today, so she can't be here. But she wanted to mention the CTC Foundation Scholarship and Annual Alumni Distinction Ceremony that we held. You recognize the two people on the left, Command Sergeant Major Bregoe and Bobby Hawksworth. Both were our recipients and they received a medallion inside of a framed picture. And then they had the medallion that they would wear. On the right is Mr. Horace Grace, is the chairman of the foundation and a young lady who received a scholarship. Mentioning the scholarships, we had two hundred and seventy scholarships were given out this year by the foundation board for a total of six hundred and five thousand dollars. That's pretty impressive. I know that KISD boasts about theirs and that is impressive too. They were boasting the other night about the million. They're trying to make, I think, four million dollars that they've given in the ten years that they've given them out. But I, I think if we go back, it's been much more than four million dollars that we've given out. So we just need to do a better, like y'all want our press release, I think, and those numbers, you know. But congratulations to everybody and thank you all for being at all of these ceremonies. I couldn't make some of the last ones, but I watched them as much as I could on TV or on the video I played with the spirit. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Item number five is discuss and consider approval of the April twenty-twenty-two general financial statements investment report. Order.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Liberty can be with us today, he's taking care of some very important family business. He's been up in this, so. He reports that we continue to run in the red and nothing has changed since this last report. We're still looking at approximately three-point-seven million dollars less than our bottom line in the previous year. And as we previously discussed, this is due to the fourteen percent decrease in tuition revenue and that salary increase that we gained this past year. Those decreases are offset by some part funding. However, as we enter into the summer term, the summer semester, historically, we know that spring is our largest enrollment semester. I mean, fall, excuse me, and then it drops off in the spring and then even more so in the summer. So what we're seeing is that expenses are probably going to outpace revenues during the summer. However, we are, we continue to be fiscally responsible, reviewing every requisition, every purchase, scrutinizing those things pretty closely to minimize the impact to the bottom line. So at this time, we are asking that you approve the financial statements, the general financial investment report for the fourth quarter.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the general financial statement. Any discussion of that motion? All those who agree to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven is discuss and consider approval of five-year tuition increase. Order.
Last week, Mr. Liberty discussed scheduling a systematic tuition increase for the next fiscal year, the five, five next fiscal years, excuse me, beginning of fiscal year twenty-twenty-four beyond what you just approved for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. And this schedule was proposed not only to allow students to plan, but to also minimize the burden of a significant immediate increase at one time. It was also noted that depending on enrollments or economic outlook, that we can make adjustments at any time to that schedule. And so at this time, the administration recommends the approval of a five-year tuition increase as follows. And I'm going for the purpose of the minute and reporting, I will read these for you. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-four proposed rate, in district, one hundred and five dollars, out of district, one hundred and thirty dollars. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-five proposed rate, tuition rate, in district, one hundred and ten dollars, out of district, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-six proposed rate, in district, one hundred and sixteen dollars, out of district, one hundred and forty-four dollars. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven proposed rate, in district, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, out of district, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-eight proposed rate, in district, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, out of district, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. At this time, we seek your approval to inform me that session.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve the five-year differential increases in tuition. Any question, any discussion on that motion?
I think Mr. Liberty also pointed out that we have a prerogative of change that downward if things start to
The adjustment can go up or down. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So we will continue to monitor annually the various things that affect, you know, the college's operations, whether it's, you know, something external happening in the economy or enrollment increase that we find that it's not necessary. So absolutely, sir.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Also, last week when we were talking about this, did we also discuss some, for the different programs
Differential.
Differential, yes.
No, sir. Differential, those are approved separately and Dr. Fisher and his team evaluate those programs and the cost of those programs and will bring those forward at, you know, at any given time when he determines that it exists.
We discussed it last week for the previous one.
Yeah, you did approve some new rates in the previous one.
Any other questions? All those who agree to say aye.
Aye.
All those who follow. Motion carries. Item number seven is discuss and consider approval of contract for Hilltop Security Assets Management Investment Advisory Services and for initial two-year periods of September the first of twenty-twenty-two to August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. And one two-year option period. Order.
The current contract with Hilltop Security Management ends on August thirty-one of this year. And during last week's board workshop, Mr. Liberty summarized the solicitation to lecture process, which included the independent evaluation of five proposals by a four-member committee. And it was unanimous that Hilltop Securities was the most qualified and best company to provide this service. I will also point out that they did not increase their fees, they held their fees the same as they currently contract, so that's really good. So at this time, we recommend in the contract we award to Hilltop Securities.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve and discuss on that motion. All those who agree to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Turner. Item number eight is discuss and consider approval exercise the first option for the contract, the right one in the cap of PC for audit professor of year twenty-twenty-two, the amount of seven one thousand, seven one, seven one thousand five hundred dollars.
What?
First off, here at the law firm, the services I believe, and all the audit and the battery across. Hey, the administration's
Any questions? Order. All those who agree to motion. Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion on that motion? All those who agree to motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Excellent. Item number nine is discuss and consider approval to exercise the option year one with BKCW-FM Global for commercial property insurance in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars for the period of July the first of twenty-twenty-two to August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Murphy?
Captain, Chairman, members of the board, Chancellor. As discussed last week during workshop, this is a proposal with BKCW-FM Global for commercial property insurance, option year one. This recommendation is, this recommendation of the administration is in the best interest of the college and we recommend approval of that today.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on that motion? All those who agree to the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item number ten is discuss and approve the twenty-twenty-three for salary increase in retention facilities for the Chancellor and for the internal article. At this point, we'll adjourn to the workshop, I mean, to the executive session to discuss a topic.
No. No, I'm not going on interview. No.